Where are we? Chris is here. Chrissy. We have, um, Chris.
I'm over there now. I was here when I... Look at us. Oh, there's only four of us.
Good thing I wanted to show that out.
Better be down here.
Are you on your seat? December seventh, right? Cause that's all eight, so.
Yeah, I didn't see it in January ones.
They moved us around.
There we go.
Everybody ready? Alright, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our planning commission meeting on Thursday, February first. We're just a couple of minutes behind, but we'll go ahead and get started. We'll have our pledge allegiance by Jackson Spence. If you'll just come to the podium.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, so, we're few in numbers tonight, but we do have a full quorum. Okay, so, go ahead and have approval for minutes on December seventh.
I'll prove the minutes.
We don't have January eighteenth.
We don't have January eighteenth in there. Is that correct?
The note says it differently, though. That's the only thing I would say.
On the minutes, it says January eighteenth, but in our packets, December.
Okay, so, we're gonna... Okay, first let me go ahead and... We're gonna go ahead, if someone will make a motion to continue the minutes for January eighteenth.
So moved.
Motion by Adam.
Second.
Okay, second by Chris, on favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then, since we have our December seventh... And we... Gordon's, or not Gordon, um...
We haven't approved him yet, so we need to.
Yeah, okay, and Chris...
But if it's not advertised, can we still approve it?
That's what I was wondering. Does anybody know? Since the minutes for December seventh isn't advertised on our...
They're not, they're not in the minutes. Can we approve them if they're not in the minutes?
Boy, and our legal counsel isn't here tonight. Is there any reason why we need to have those approved? I mean, we could defer until the next meeting, obviously, so...
I would actually, just to be safe.
That's fine.
So I'll move to continue.
We don't need to do anything, so it's not...
It's not even on it.
It's not even on here, so we're good. Okay, thank you. Alright, item one point four, conflicts of interest. Okay, go ahead and move that. Alright, we'll go ahead and just get started on item two point one, which is a conditional use permit for an LDS meeting house.
Okay, this is for an LDS meeting house that is on the corner of Rosecrest Road and Mirabella on the southwest corner. And it's just gonna be a standard LDS church with, let's see... Yeah, it's gonna be facing an eastward direction, parking lot all around. I think we have the applicant here to speak to that. Okay, great, we do.
Perfect, if the applicant would like to come up, and if you'll just state your name for the record.
Mike Davy with BHD Architects, sixty-five East Wadler Park Drive in Draper. Yes, this is just a standard church meeting house, planning on getting started this spring with construction. One item I wanted to speak to, that's in the staff report about the fencing requirement, providing a solid visual, or a solid vinyl fence on the south and west property lines. In our discussions with staff, we had discussed that we would approach the neighbors. We have eight neighbors that are already adjacent to that site, their backyards. Some have fences, some don't, some have visually open vinyl fences, some have solid vinyl fences. If it's okay, we'd like to propose that we just approach the neighbors, and if they want to keep their existing visually open fence, that that be allowed, or their existing solid vinyl fence, and that we would fill in, of course, any gaps in the fence with a solid vinyl fence.
It'll undulate between the two.
It may, I just, we don't wanna have to force the neighbors to take down their fence if they wanna keep theirs. You know, we, you know, one neighbor has existing masonry pillars with a combination of composite fence, and, you know, like a wrought iron look. And then there's another neighbor that has, you know, slatted vinyl fence that's visually open. So I'm, I'm not sure if we can require the neighbors to tear down their fences to be able to get a vis, you know, a solid vinyl fence.
Is that on the silver rose circle part, or is it on the...
I think there's one on each, if I remember right. There's the one closest, the furthest north fence is the one that has, you know, the masonry pillars, and it's visually open as well. But I think there's another one on the, I guess it'll be on the south side.
But you're doing retaining walls, it looks like, right?
We will have a retaining wall, yes.
I mean, the whole change could look totally different for those homeowners.
Yeah, those homeowners, yeah, they'll, you know, in that corner, there may be eighteen feet of retaining wall. So the parking lot's gonna be eighteen feet lower than those backyard neighbors.
So we haven't met with the neighbors yet?
Not yet.
Do you also have color board or anything for us to look at?
Yes.
You know if it's gonna be close to the same type of color as the one that's right next to it, like across the...
Down the street, across the walk.
It may be similar, but we're gonna try not to match that exactly.
Also, I know I've seen around some schools before where the church puts up bollards. Are you guys going to bollard your accesses, since it's right next to a school?
I think we might be doing that, I'm not sure. But I, I think if the traffic becomes a concern, yes, we'd wanna put in some bollards and be able to close that.
The other one's right across the street from the school, too. It's pretty busy.
The, but it doesn't shortcut through a corner.
I could see a lot of people dropping their kids off, letting them walk across the street there.
I know, but I'm just saying you can shortcut through the parking lot across the corner of the school-zoned area, is all.
Does anybody else have any more questions for him?
Thank you.
You can go ahead and take a seat for now, thank you.
I personally think it needs to be solid fence, just to look consistent.
Yeah, I just wish I could see a picture of it.
Yeah, you don't, you guys didn't go out and take any pictures of the area, did you?
We did not take a picture for that one.
That's fine.
Okay, yeah, do you mind bringing those up?
We will need to retain those for the record, though, so you'll be leaving those with us.
Oh, so do I.
I drive by it enough, I should remember which one it is.
I know, same here.
Be honest, though, that area's gonna change so much with the retaining wall. I, I just, I think it's better to have it be standardized. Are you gonna do an inlay where it ties in straight to your retaining wall, or are you gonna step it back? I, I guess for me, I would like it to be standardized. I'm okay if we approve it, contingent on the fence coming back, with you getting feedback from what that is, for me. But I, I, I want it to be consistent. So if one person, I, I just don't want it to patchwork all the way across. So if you can come up with a preferred alternative, I don't know how you, you all feel, but that's kinda what I'm thinking.
If, if I may, would that then require them that we remove the fences from the backyard neighbors?
Potentially.
Okay, is that a requirement that we can impose on the church? Or is that, I guess, is that something that we could require the neighbors to do?
Depends where it is on the property line, right? I mean, have you, have you finished your survey?
The fence is primarily right on the property line. There's a few places where it goes over, you know, one way or the other, by another foot or eighteen inches. But I don't think we can do a double fence. I think that's prohibited specifically by ordinance.
I just think it needs to be standardized, to be honest. I mean, that, that, those homes have been there for so long that, I know, in that area, I don't remember the details of the photo, and it didn't show it in there. But I know some of those were blown over not too long ago, so, I, I don't know.
Well, and I think for security, too. I think it needs to be fenced.
Is that an issue that the commisioner would be comfortable deferring to staff with the guidance that we're seeking full screening? And that you desire that it be more, more standardized, as you were using that language?
I, I have no problem with staff making the judgment for me, as long as it's consistent. Whatever it is, it needs to be consistent across the whole wall.
We, we need to have the applicant work with the, with the community, with the property owners, and try and achieve a consistent fence plan.
That, that's what I...
And if, and if they're unable to do that, maybe that's an issue we could bring back as an amendment.
Correct. I, I, I'm okay with that, I don't know how you guys... I really don't care if it's a solid, or it's a mixture of the solid because of where, how high it is with elevation, but I think it needs to be consistent, cause it's going to be so high.
The tough part for me is, as I look at those, I mean, yeah, all of them have pretty much the vinyl fence. I mean, it's why one of them had it a little bit open, but then you have the one on the corner that, that's a lot of money what he put in. And I don't think as a city, we can ask them to take that out and put a vinyl fence in. I mean, that's my opinion.
Now, let's be clear.
We're not asking.
This, this applicant has no authority to remove fencing that's on somebody else's property, right?
All they can do is put in the fence.
Can't touch that. So, yeah, they, we can't do anything on somebody else's property without that property owner's permission.
But you gotta remember, if there's gonna be retaining wall, there may be reasons that those homeowners may want to know and change their... They may want a fence because of safety reasons for their own protection. So that's kinda where I'm okay with staff taking over.
I'm okay with the staff taking care of it. Deferring it to the staff and helping to resolve this.
As long as it's consistent, is all I care.
Yeah, just provide us with the, with the guidance based on city standards as far as what you're looking for.
Does that mean you're ready to make a motion?
I am, as soon as I can find the staff's recommendations.
That's number six.
Alright, I move that we, I re, I approve item two point one, with the staff's nine recommendations, with an adjustment to number six to say, provide a six-foot vinyl fence along the south and west property line that is consistent with all of the property lines, and that staff can evaluate that according to city standard. Is that comfortable for you? What I said? Okay.
So, motion by Adam.
Second.
And a second by Chris. Andrea?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Thank you. Alright, item two point two. It's a subdivision amendment for a lot line adjustment in the Miller Crossing Pod Five. And this is on for a public hearing.
This is a lot line adjustment in Miller Crossing Pod Five, Phase Two, that, on the north side, that is needed due to a wall and a trail that were required by the developer to be located up there to follow along the creek. And then there was a, I guess a miscalculation as to where the wall was constructed in the trail. So it, it ended up that we needed to take a little bit of the property that was meant to be the north part of the, of five different lots, and kinda dig into that a little bit to provide adequate space around where the wall and trail were actually put. And for specific questions, Blake Thomas is here, city engineer, who can answer anything regarding to the detail, regarding the details of the wall, or the trail, or the need for the, taking some of the property from those lots.
So if I understand you right, the lots are getting smaller and the open space is getting bigger, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, so that red area there is the only part that's changing in this lot line adjustment.
Okay.
Any more questions, Craig?
Okay, so before we start with the public hearing, let me just go over the public hearing policy and procedure. The purpose of public hearings is to allow citizens to address items on the agenda. Citizens requesting to address, the commission will be asked to complete a written comment form, presented to Wendy Thorpe, our deputy recorder. In general, the chair will allow an individual three minutes to address the commission. A spokesperson recognized as representing a group in attendance may be allowed up to five minutes. This policy applies to all public hearings. So if you wish to make a comment, the forms are in the rear of the room, and if you'll just hand them to Wendy when you are done completing it, and then just come and state your name for the record. And we will go ahead and open up the public hearing.
Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing.
I'm okay with it.
I'm good.
Alright, somebody would like to make a motion?
Hey, I will. I move that, let me find out. We approve the subdivision amendment for a lot line adjustment in Miller Crossing, item two point two. File number S two zero one six dash two zero five dash zero two.
A motion by Andrea?
Second.
And a second by Adam. Adam?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Alright, on to our last item for the evening. This is our legislative item. Item three point one. It's a request to text change to the land development code to modify the maximum allowable accessory building heights. And this will also be on for a public hearing.
Okay, now, this one is actually serving two purposes for this text change. One is when the, when the land development code was rewritten, when it got brought over, some, a lot of things were jumbled around a little bit, and the old code had things in multiple places, which is part of the reason for the rewrite. So when it, they were translated to this new version of the code, it turned out that restrictions on the height of accessory buildings actually ended up showing up in three different areas of the code. One was in the definitions for each particular zone itself, and then we've got a supplementary chapter, chapter twenty-nine, in which it had two locations in that chapter, which were prescriptive as to the maximum height of accessory buildings. So what this change is doing first is it is taking all of the code written in the definitions for each particular zone and pointing them to the same one section that is located in the supplemental area, chapter twenty-nine, of the new code. And that is the one area that dictates what the maximum height allowed is for every zone. And it accounts for differences in lot sizes and zones and things like that. So that way, in the future, if anything needs to be changed, it can be changed in only one place, and it will effectively change everywhere it is supposed to, without worries about having, missing any other place. So that's the most obvious reason for the change. The second thing, and this is the part where we do not, the staff has not provided a particular recommendation to you, but are leaving it up to you to discuss, is that the measurement, the method of measuring height also changed between the old version of the ordinance and the new land development code. Under the old ordinance, the way that building height was measured was it was measured from the original grade around the structure to the midpoint of the roof. around the structure to the midpoint of the roof. But the methodology used now under this newly rewritten code is that it is measured from finished grade, not original, but finished, and it's measured to the peak or top of the structure, not to the midpoint. And the reason why that's important is if we take something like a really easy, really obvious, sixteen feet is our general maximum height for your average, like quarter acre lot, for example. So you would measure from a flat lot, finished grade, up to the midpoint of the roof under the old system. That was sixteen feet. So obviously, because of roof pitch, the peak was, depending on the size of the structure, could be significantly higher, could be just a little bit higher. Under the new version, you're measuring to the peak. So now you're dictating that the sixteen feet no longer goes up to the midpoint of the roof, but to the peak. So effectively, you're bringing the maximum height down. Maximum allowable height is lower under this new code than it was under the old. And I think the intent with the rewrite was to keep the building height limits essentially about the same. We weren't trying to make a real difference. So it's up to you to determine how or if you want to raise or adjust the maximum allowable height to keep them comparable under this new measurement system to what they were before. And that was just an obvious example. It gets a little bit more complicated once you start talking about measurements on significantly sloped lots.
So where does it say, I'll be honest, all I see is what we're cutting out. I don't see where we added in on the building height, other than in the FR zone. It's, I don't see anywhere where it gives me a table that says the recommended heights.
About the sixteen, twenty, or twenty-five feet.
I don't see anywhere it says that. I see where we've crossed it out, but I don't see a table that says maximum accessory heights for these zones are...
Should be... The first two pages are what determines the maximum height. If you go, if you start at the first page, Section 2, 29, 5, and you go down to subsection F, that is where the height limits start.
But I thought the intent of what we were trying to do with this codification is to remove references to text and try and make a tabular form of what heights we wanna do.
It was not to make a tabular form, no, it was to...
No, I meant the original rewrite of the whole zone was to make it easier for us all of having a list, a table of uses, a table of information related to each type of use.
So you want, so what you're saying is that you would actually prefer that we keep the height limits separated into each zone? Is that what you want?
Apparently I don't, but I'm trying to see why. I want a table, is what I want. And you're taking it out of the table and putting it in the text, which, what I'm saying was why we recodified all of the code. So I would prefer to go back into the text. So what you're striking out, John, so you're aware, we're striking it out in the table and we're keeping it in the text. And that's not what the intent was with what we did the last year.
Well, a lot of the, I think, depending on what you're, I mean, I see exactly what you're saying, but another part of the intent was to consolidate and not have information in multiple places. So now, all height information is literally only in one place in the code.
And I agree with that, and as I read this, it's fine, but it really is just telling me where we measure the height is all I'm getting. It's not telling me it's sixteen feet for this, it's twenty feet for this, and it's twenty-five feet for this.
We struck that all out.
That's what is missing with what we're seeing here.
I'm not sure what you mean, it tells you everything. It's not showing it the way you want, I think is what's...
On the revised current method? Because when I read that right here, it doesn't say anything about the heights at all whatsoever. I don't have anything about the heights here.
In Section F, you don't have anything about the heights?
I don't have an F. Do you have an F?
You don't have a section...
I have an F, but all F says is C10, 29, 5D. Or C...
See, I think we're looking at different, do you have six pages of text?
I'm talking about the one that says F, and it has the maximum building height on the top.
You're looking at tables, there's two, there's pages before that.
Agreed.
Alright.
Well, that's what prescribes the height, that's what I'm saying. It is literally those, those two tiny paragraphs that dictate what the height is for every place. They're about a sentence each.
Which says all heights will be sixteen?
It says all buildings have sixteen feet in height, except for half an acre or larger lots, that you can go twenty. And also, if you have half an acre or larger, you can go twenty-five if you keep larger setbacks. That's literally the only restriction on height in the entire code.
And then you wanna add in another section that says where we measure it to?
Well, there already is another section that tells us where we're measuring it to.
Where is that at?
I'll be honest, I, what I'm seeing is a lot of, I mean, it's kinda all over the place and maybe it's just I'm not, it's not clicking in my mind. But I don't, I don't see, it looks like to me we're pulling stuff out, like...
We are. We're taking out individual heights, that's true.
But, but I mean, you're even pulling out minimum yard for accessory buildings. You're cutting out accessory buildings.
Because Section C and D prescribe that, yeah. Everything is pointing to one section instead of doing it multiple times in different chapters.
I hear what you're saying, but you're not doing the same edits on R2, RM, R1, R2, RM, all the way down the table. So in R1, you are changing it where you're saying C10-29-5D. That's all you're saying for rear yard. But right below that, on R2, it still says three feet.
That's true. No, you're right. Because those are the ones that are likely to never change, so we didn't, we're worried about future maintenance of the code. The three feet is always gonna be three, we could easily input that into here, you're correct on that.
I'm just saying it seems very inconsistent what we're trying to do. That's what I'm struggling with, is there was a big effort to put it so that when you looked at these tables, it was easier, you didn't have to remember to go look at the code. You didn't have to go find all the references, cuz I, I mean, John, correct me if I'm wrong, that's kinda why we did the big exercise where we reviewed all the code. And it feels like we're pulling it back, and I personally would rather not do that because it is easier to be able to have you give me a staff report that says, these are the requirements. And we can straight look at them.
You are correct, I totally get it, and we'll do it any way you want, that's not a problem. But part of what this is helping to alleviate is there have been changes made like this and in other types of ordinance that were meant to affect all different types of situations and ended up effectively getting missed or misapplied to the wrong zones or wrong portion of one type of zone. And this alleviates all that. Every change is easily shown right here in one or two sentences. You can always calculate exactly what it's hitting and what it's not.
So that's why my question is, right below it in R2, we don't say C-section, whatever?
Agreed, and we can. True. Or not, we can have nothing say that. And we can keep everything in every individual section, but then we run the risk when we change of did we hit everything the way we meant to? Did we miss something, did we not? Because we're maintaining limits in multiple places once again. So if you don't like what this is doing, that's fine, you can just deny it and we will redo it the way you want. But we need to not, we're currently prescribing height in three areas of the code. And that we cannot do.
But they're all consistent, correct?
No, they're not, they're contradictory.
I think what you want is, you want it in one place, but you want it in a table.
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay, we can do that, just send it back.
Yeah. Yeah, we could absolutely do that. But yeah, as it's written today, it is contradictory. One part says sixteen feet, one part says twenty-five feet.
Okay, I want it in a table. The other thing I wanted to talk to everybody is the height thing where you measure it to. I honestly don't believe we ever intended it to go to the top. Cuz we're gonna have to increase the heights all the way over. Because if you included the pitch, people will be punished for meeting, matching their home. So if you really wanna talk accessory buildings, typically they should look like the home. And what I'm saying, if we have it go to the top, they will not be able to achieve, in most areas, unless it's the new style of the new...
Flatter roofs.
Flatter roof. They will not be able to achieve a matching to their home. I, for example, had to match my house when I did my accessory building on the roof pitch line cuz I wanted it to look nice and match. What I'm worried about, if we change where we're measuring it to, we're going to make it not match. Now, I can understand, maybe we tie to the lowest point of elevation cuz we've had that before where we've had, you know, the mountains going like this, the back of the lots here, and the front of the lots here. I mean, we've had many of those cases. But I still don't think, unless we're gonna be consistent with the home to, to the accessory buildings, wherever we're measuring that pitch to needs to be the standard.
Well, I guess my question is, do we receive complaints about this?
Oh, yeah.
So we receive a lot of complaints about the height of these buildings?
Yes.
As the height's too low, or the height's too high?
Too low. Well, especially now, because we also have a hard time telling them what they're allowed to build because one part, they were, like I said, giving contradictory height limits, so we don't even know which one's enforceable.
I guess, okay, my question wasn't sixteen, twenty, twenty-five feet high, my question was the roof. If we're measuring it at the sixteen feet, that was previously...
It was previously to the midpoint, yeah.
Yeah, is the complaint that part, or is it just, is it supposed to be sixteen, twenty, or twenty-five?
That is a complaint as well, absolutely.
So, so are we getting a lot of complaints from neighbors or individuals saying they're too tall?
No, we're getting a complaint from the people who want to build and saying they can't build as tall as they would like.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted to know, because...
Which if you tie to the top of the roof, you make it even shorter.
It'll make it shorter, yeah. And also maybe not be able to have the same pitch of even their house.
Cuz we've had people who have, they have had their plans underway for a little while and we're measuring under the old system. And then when they came in, I said, you didn't submit under that old system, so you now have to reconfigure it for the new ordinance. So that, those are the people who really notice that they have lost height in their structure.
I'm okay with the way it was, to be honest.
Okay.
Yeah, so boy.
So when you say that, do you wanna revert back to the measurement from original grade? Or do you wanna keep it from finished grade? Is that a problem that you have with it too?
I want it to be original.
Okay.
Because, and I'll make sure you understand why, you can change a lot to finish grade.
Absolutely.
And they can come in and do a retaining wall. I don't think it's fair to their, whoever they could be next to, to have the potential that they just build it really high and raise the whole earth, the earth back up. So I would prefer it's from original grade. And then if, if they need to do a deviation, then it comes to this and we look at it from an individual perspective.
Okay.
You guys have any issue with that?
Nope.
Nope.
This is on for a public hearing. So if anybody else has comments...
And I think a table will simplify it.
Yes, I do like the tables, actually.
And it'll just tell you when it could be sixteen, when it could be twenty, and when it could be twenty-five feet.
Agreed, per zone, that's what we need. And you can refer to wherever that is.
Okay, so this is on for a public hearing. So if you're wishing to make a comment, please state your name. We will go ahead and close the public hearing. So this is a recommendation to the city council.
There's so many changes, I think I'm just gonna continue it.
Okay.
For me.
Sounds good.
That's a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Adam, second by Chris. Andrea?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Adam?
Yes.
And that has been continued. Alright, item four. Any comments?
The only, the only comment I wanted to make was maybe for city council to start considering what buffering means, maybe to provide a better definition of what they think that means between different, different zoning, different lot sizes, things like that. It would be nice to have a little clearer picture of what they believe that is, so...
I don't have anything.
Okay, so we did hear that Robin, our longest commissioner, has decided to resign. Oh, I just wanna thank her for her service. So grateful for her and all her input that she has put into our city.
She'll be missed.
She will be missed, I wish she was here tonight.
Commissioner Morton, and I'm sure it's the intent of the city that we'll do something more formal to recognize her service, so either she'll be back to receive something here or perhaps from the city council, so we'll make sure we honor her service.
Thank you.
Please let us know when that does happen.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Alright, so future meetings. We have city council on Wednesday, February 14th at 7:00 PM, and planning commission on February 15th at 7:00 PM. Alright, like motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Chris, and a second by Adam. And we adjourn, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, we adjourned. I didn't think I did, only if it was a tie.
We're only missing Curtis, though. But what I'm saying is, if I remember right, a quorum constitutes as four. I just remember, cuz Clint used to do it and he would vote.
I think you're right.
I'm just saying, in the...
That's alright.
Am I, when you look and make sure...
See, I can't remember.
Cuz we're so tight, and we're gonna be tight for a while. I think we just need to make sure we... Cuz I think if, I'll be honest, if I wasn't here, or one of us wasn't here, I think we could even meet.
No, well, we can't, no, we can meet, we can listen to comments, but we can't do anything.
Yep.
But we still have to do...
Will you just look into that, cuz we're really close.
Yeah, let us know, cuz we've done it before when there was three of us, where we've actually met. I have no idea.